Let us begin with a prayer. Gracious Lord, we give you praise today. We give you praise for what this day is. We thank you that you are here with us, that above all, you give us your love and your grace. We pray today that you help us during this time, that we can learn and talk evenly and with faith. We pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to introduce our Saltport members, Simplified Accountable Leadership Team. Bill Brenneman is co-chair with myself, Steve Meyer. We also have Brenda Bangston. You couldn't hear me? Should I start over? So, Saltport members, Bill Brenneman and Steve Meyer were co-chairs. Brenda Bangston. Dennis. Kelly Sola. Stan. And we have one more position open. So if you are into leadership and want to be a part of it, you can also join Salp. Oh, you went, there you go. I'm like, where's the DS? I'd like to also introduce our district superintendent, Reverend Zucker Yang.
How's that? If I lean into it, it will work. I'd like to share a couple of verses from John 13 to start us out. And that would be verses 34 and 35. So now I'm going to give you a new commandment. Love each other just as I have loved you. You should love each other. Your love for one another will prove to the world that you are my disciples. Today's subject is a very difficult, sensitive, and emotional issue. I ask that each of us respect every individual's right to their own opinion. We are not here to discuss our personal position on the issue of homosexuality itself, but rather the position of our church on the topic. Therefore, questions are limited to the Wisconsin United Methodist Conference or to the General Conference's position on human sexuality. When we get to the question and answer portion, if you have a question, raise your hand, and I will bring a microphone to you so that everyone can hear this question. This town hall meeting today is being livestreamed, so it is important that the microphones are working and we're using them properly. Please direct your question to whomever you would like to address it. How did we get here? Shortly after the January 17 Saltport meeting, I was messaged by a member of the congregation who was concerned about the position of the Wisconsin UMC and the General Conference on Human Sexuality. The subject was placed on the March 21 Saltport Agenda at that meeting, which I drug on for almost three hours. The Board voted to hold a town hall-style meeting on May 7 to bring information forward to the congregation. Last June, following the Wisconsin United Methodist Conference Annual Conference of 2022, Pastor John and the Saltport discussed the 2019 addendum of paragraph 2553 to the discipline, which is the paragraph of disaffiliation. Financial requirements of disaffiliation were discussed. These requirements seem to be two years of apportionment, a yet-to-be-determined amount for the pension fund, the statement that the local church shall satisfy all other debts, loans, liabilities, and some other terms. No action was taken at that time. So what do we do now? We have not met the deadlines that were specified by the 2019 Special Call General Conference, so what we can do is wait for the 2024 General Conference and listen, learn, and wait patiently for further information from the General Conference. The position of the United Methodist Church on human sexuality is the same now as it has been since the Methodist Church was established in 1969. So there's no need to jump into a decision that we may regret later. There is a lot of misinformation and misleading information on the Internet. I suggest you check the website that you see posted on our screen here. And if you have an iPhone, you can scan that right there and it'll take you right to that site. The website is all one word, asktheumc.org. And when you get to that particular site, look for the series, "Is the United Methodist Church Really?", and then it'll be a question following that. There is no action that we can or should take at this time until we get more information or direction from the Wisconsin UMC or the General Conference of 2024. At this time, we're going to move to the question and answer period. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and I will bring the microphone to you.
I just wanted to know if you could be a little bit more specific as far as what the, I think the two biggest issues are the ordination and gay marriage? Just because I think a lot of people don't necessarily know what our stand is on that at this point.
So let me begin briefly just to clarify our positions, the Ramahteris Church, and then our thought about, you know, 2024 General Conference. And so before we respond to questions or concern that we may have, so I'd like to again remind us the position of the Ramahteris Church. And I have five or six dot I could mention. Again, we, the Ramahteris Church, affirm that all persons are sacred worth and are welcome in the church. The Ramahteris Church does not condone the practice of homosexuality and considers this practice incompatible with Christian teaching. We affirm God's grace is available to us. We will seek to live together in Christian community, welcoming, forgiving, loving one another as Christ has loved and accepted us. We implore families and churches not to reject or condemn lesbian or gay members and friends. We commit ourselves to be in ministries for and with all persons. We do not ordain, again, we do not ordain self of while practicing homosexual. Our clergy may not perform same-sex union ceremony, so that's being prohibited. Our denomination does not fund ministry that neither either support LGBTQ issues or oppose LGBTQ issues. And we are not allow our church or same-sex gender to be affiliated in our churches. So that's our position at this time. Our position has not changed since 1969, correct. Again, what about 2024 General Conference? And nobody know about our futures, only God know. And so, but some of us like to think ahead. And so these are some of the thoughts we may have. It is likely that the next General Conference, 2024, will allow more regional variations in the Book of Disciplines. Regional meaning that the US may have its own Book of Discipline, and then our Central Conference, like in the Philippines or in Africa, they may have their own Book of Disciplines. And that the US will remove the restriction language on human sexuality. They are also likely to continue to offer an X plan similar to what is happening now, paragraph 2553. The Ramahteris Church will remain a big tent, meaning that we will be more inclusive. We all are welcome from conservative to liberal. We can worship together and engage in mission together. We agree at least, at the least, 90% of our theology. We have fruitful conversations about our difference, and we can disagree, but we will, most of the people will be willing to be together. Most Ramahteris are compatible list, meaning that we can accept a range of theological and practice of life in the Christian faith. And then no one will be forced to teach about LGBTQ issues. No pastor will be forced to do gay wedding. No church will be forced to receive LGBTQ pastor without consultation. 99% of the Ramahteris are and will remain theologically octoducts on basic Christian principles such as the Trinity, the divinity of Christ, the authority of scriptures, and so on, as stated in paragraph 1 of 4 in our book of disciplines. And so this is our positions and our thought about the future. Thank you.
Sandy, before I come to you, I want to ask Kelly two questions that the Saltport wanted to have answered. Is this microphone working okay?
Yeah.
Specifically, will this congregation be required to hire a gay pastor? That was the first question.
And the answer would be no. It has been the practice of the bishops or the church, the reason that the Ramahteris Church not to force or not to impose any decision that the congregation will not be suitable for the congregations.
And the second question is related. Will this congregation be required to perform same-sex marriages?
Again, the answer is no.
Yes.
And I hope the future will also be no because there may be variation in terms of interpretation, and there may be, I would say, a soft tone to the Book of Discipline that church can be allowed it, but they are not forced to do it. That may be a possibility, but we do not know the future.
I'm just curious. If I heard you right, you said that 99% of churches aren't affected by this? Did I hear you say that?
I said, in general, the Ramahteris Church, I would say here in the US, I could say that about 10% of churches that seeking, that are seeking to disaffiliate.
Okay, my question-
But in terms of belief, I would say 99% of the people still affirm the same beliefs. We have been believing or practicing.
Then my question is, why has this become an issue? If it doesn't affect 90% of churches-
I only have my own opinions, and people may have different opinion on this, but the humans, we are still fragile human beings in our natures, sinfulness. And so even in politics, in our families, in the church families, there may be people who wanted to rise or wanted, I would say, what will be the term, but people who are seeking to be known, wanted their perception, their belief, to impose on others. And so we have those people who rise up to raise the conflict and division among us. And so that would be the reasons.
Okay, I understand that. But my point is, in essence, the way I interpret, well, what the Methodist Church is proposing, this change basically is saying that the act of homosexuality is no longer sinful. When I read the Bible, it tells me that it is.
And I would say that there may be people who would agree with your questions, but because we have different spectrums of churches, leaders, theologians, but I say that there is far extreme liberal and far extreme conservative. But maybe those who are far extreme liberal may say that homosexuality is no longer a sin. But I believe the majority still considers homosexuality a sin.
But if they make this change to our United Methodist Discipline, then isn't the United Methodist Church saying that it isn't if we will ordain active homosexuals as bishops and perform same-sex marriages?
And I think there may be a variation in the discipline regarding interpretation on the issue of sin. And so, like I mentioned, the majority of the people, again, will abide or believe in the scripture and about sin. But a small majority or a small number of people who are far extreme liberal may not because they will interpret the scripture that grace abound and grace cover all sins. And so that may be priority of interpretation. But in terms of sins personally, yes, homosexuality may still be a sin for us. But maybe there are few people or some people. But I think the majority of Ramahteris may still, yeah, believe what the scripture teaches us.
Okay, well, I guess then I don't understand how this is going to resolve anything then? If we're still going to be divided on this issue then, based on what you just said, because-
We will, we will continue to be a divided church because we cannot all agree, but there are people who may be able to still live together even though we may disagree in our interpretation of the scriptures. And I will say to you that the majority of the Ramahteris today, again, will affirm, you know, our discipline, which I just mentioned, our position of human sexuality.
Well, one more final point. I am not saying that someone who identifies as homosexual- Closer? I am not saying that someone who identifies as homosexual should not be among us, doesn't have God's grace, shouldn't be served the sacraments. But my question is, I don't quite understand why the United Methodist Church as an organization is willing to upheaval centuries of doctrine? If we're looking at a small minority of people that disagree with what has been known to be Christian doctrine, Christian thought process based on biblical teachings, and now we're not supposed to believe that? Or we should be more open to say that there's different interpretations of that?
I don't think we are saying anything different. Again, paragraph 2553 gives an opportunity to churches and leaders who do not want to continue to debate or continue to live according to our Book of Discipline, to exit the church. That's the only thing what we do, but we, I don't think there's a, I would say that those who are committed Ramahteris like you are and we are, most of us don't have issues. Most of us don't want to be separated. But there's still a minority people who want to do that, and I say 10% of the church in the US.
And that's fine, except what's happening is the traditional churches are the ones that are given the choice to accept these changes if they go through or to leave. And I think, why is it that the majority of traditional churches are the ones who have to make that change, to disaffiliate? And getting back to paragraph 2553, I think there's something very important in that paragraph that I don't feel we, as this congregation particularly, were aware of. And that is that if you decide to disaffiliate, there's a process you have to go through. But the criteria is that you had to pay up two years' full apportionments. There is a contribution to the pastor's retirement, plus any other legal loans, et cetera, that you might have out with the church. All your legal obligations, your financial obligations have to be paid up. But with the caveat that you retain your buildings, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct from the paragraph 2553.
Which sunsets at the end of this year. And if you don't, if we didn't do that, then the way the Book of Discipline is written, we don't get to retain our buildings. There's no guarantee once this paragraph sunsets, is there?
That's a misinterpretation.
Okay, explain to me where I'm misinterpreting it.
If you don't meet the requirements, you're not disaffiliating. And therefore, the church, the building stays with this congregation. Is that correct?
Yeah, and so you, as a congregation, and if you go through this process as being proposed and being in the process now, we churches, then you get your building and everything that you access, everything.
Yes.
But if you do not go through the process, then you continue to remain as the Ramahteris Church. And for people who want just to leave, they can leave. But they cannot take the property or take everyone with them.
Right, and I understand that. But my point is, paragraph 2553 gave congregations quite a bit of a financial break there, that if they did disaffiliate under that paragraph, they could retain their property. If we didn't act by the end of this year to have that done, and I understand we've missed the deadlines to do so, there is no guarantee that after General Conference 2024, that there will be an exit plan for churches that still choose to disaffiliate that will include them being able to keep their property with-
Right, right, there's no guarantee for that. But I just want to say that Wisconsin has been making this the most fair process. And so I want to compare us with all the annual conference. If you want to leave the Ramahteris Church or if the people just leave, the building belong to the conference. So if you, you can give a value to a building, it could cost at least a million to $10 million. But in Wisconsin, we are only asking for you to pay apportements, your backdoor apportionment and 12-month coming apportionment and the pension liability, which is very small comparing to the value of the building. You can take a building with you, which is a $1 million, $20 million, but your fee in paying just to leave the Ramahteris Church, a couple hundred thousand, depending on your membership, and for your side of the church, $50,000 to $90,000. That is just a fraction of the church building.
Exactly.
And other conferences ask the church to pay 25% of the value of the building before they can leave.
Well, exactly, and that's the point that I wanted to make, that I, as a member of this church, was not informed about, did not know that that was even an option out there because this happened so quickly. Last summer, in June, it was voted on to accept that paragraph.
The process, yes.
Churches were given two months to decide if they wanted more information on this process. They had to have that process in place and meetings set up with the district superintendent, the bishop, and organizations to come in and talk to us about this. That all had to be in play by the end of last year. And then this year, by the end of this year, a church had to have all their ducks in a row, their financial obligations met so that it could be disaffiliated at General Conference in 2024. And what I am saying is I feel that the Wisconsin Conference did a very poor job of communicating that to these local churches. I would bet most churches were aware of it.
I totally disagree, and I want to say this to you. Paragraph 2553 was added to the Book of Discipline in 2019. And then Conference and churches allowed to digest paragraph 2553 in 2021. The Wisconsin Conference made a resolution about the process here in Wisconsin. In 2021, people know about it. Everyone learned about the division with the Ramahteris Church. And then 2022, we put that process into steps by steps. We encourage churches and clergies, and from my responsibility, I share with all my clergies. And if you have a delegate to the annual conference, you should have that information. That information is public in the website, unless you don't pay much attention. So if you strongly desire, wanted to leave the Ramahteris Church, you should, you know, you should be responsible to look for those informations and add on those information and those steps. So you cannot just blame anybody that, wow, so short, we don't have time. We give you time from June 2022 General Wisconsin Conference Session, and then to act on September 1st or before, yeah, by September 1st, getting the name into the process. And then there's a 17-steps process. And now we are at 15 or 14. So you cannot just say that, oh, because we are not able to jump into the wagon and now because of short time. I think that it's nobody's fault.
Reverend Yang, we have another question here. I'm sorry, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands. I thought there was one back here. There was a, back in the history of the church, there was a separation once before, and that was over the issue of slavery. Is that correct?
Yes, correct, yes. And the church divide north and south, yes.
So the church has been through this kind of a setting before, General Conference-wise?
Correct, yes.
Okay, any other comments?
Okay, thank you. No, I just want to say that the decision was made sometime back, and now we're just going through the process. And if we miss the boat for some people that wanted to do something, there's really nothing can be done, really, unless you do it church-wise. I mean, but if you're going to separate from the district, you're going to have to go by their process, their rules, correct?
I'm not sure I hear you correctly, but the rule of the process is now closed for people to enter into it now. So there's no church allowed to enter the process. So unless 2024 General Conference again establishes a new policies for church to do that.
Yes, okay, yes, that's right. Okay, thank you.
In my research, I have read one article that pointed out there has always been a process for disaffiliation for churches that were not satisfied. I personally asked the question of, is the United Methodist Church really? I sent a question into them, and I asked if there would be a process for disaffiliation. They said there could be, but it will have to be established by the General Conference of 2024. There's nothing in place right now from December 31 of 2023 until the General Conference takes action.
Correct, yes.
Are there any other questions?
I want to make one comment. The traditional churches aren't being made to do anything because they were the ones that chose to disaffiliate. They were the ones that at General Conference of 2019, they're in the majority, they voted this paragraph in. The traditional- The traditional churches aren't being made to do anything. The United Methodist Church didn't want the split at all. They wanted to stay the United Methodist Church.
And, and, yeah, that's correct, just to again answer your question. I think part of it that the Yamaterist Church want all people to be together, stay as Yamaterists, but a small number of clergy submit this petition and those are from the very far conservatives. And they want to, the, the General Conference 20, Special General Conference 2019 to approve this paragraph so that the far-left-right liberal can leave, meaning those of liberal church who, who will again interpret sin differently for these people to leave the Yamaterist Church. But because there's many other concern, challenges within the life of the church and the pandemic, the, the far-left conservatives who cannot wait, they want to leave. And so that's why we have the conservative church leaving instead of the liberal church.
Are there... Let's limit it, limit it to a question, please.
Okay, so is it not correct that because of all of the indecisiveness and the kicking this issue down the road for decades, that, as you, as you call them, the, the far-right or the traditionalist churches that are choosing to leave now, made this decision because it's like, even though this was, this change was voted down, it's, it wasn't enough to end the, end the discussion or the debate or the, or the conflict, that it just keeps coming up over and over and over? So there is no real resolution to this issue unless it is split? And although you say that they were not asked to leave, when you have strong convictions that suddenly don't align with what is being proposed, what are your choices? Is your master God or is it the United Methodist Church?
Just my answer today is that we have a committee, it's called the, I think, Forward. The Forward Committee, clergies and bishops and laypeople got together and, and suggest plan, like one church plan, the connectional plan. You probably heard that. But that even this did not go well. And so that's why eventually people who don't want to continue in the journey, the, the debate, those people want to leave and those are the ones who are leaving now. So I think there's no right and wrong or good answers for all of us. So thank you.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we're past our time limit, I apologize for that. Steve is going to lead us in a responsive reading here.
It's in your hymnal on page number eight eighty-five.
And it will be on the screen.
Where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is the one true church, apostolic and universal, whose holy faith let us now declare. We believe in God the Father, infinite in wisdom, power and love, whose mercy is over all His works and whose will is ever directed to His children's good. We believe in Jesus Christ, Son of God and Son of Man, the gift of the Father's unfailing grace, the ground of our hope and the promise of our deliverance from sin and death. We believe in the Holy Spirit as the divine presence in our lives, whereby we are kept in perpetual remembrance of the truth of Christ and find strength and help in time of need. We believe that this faith should manifest itself in the service of love as set forth in the example of our blessed Lord, to the end that the kingdom of God may come upon the earth. Amen.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. I apologize that we went over time. And there is fellowship following in the fellowship hall.
I wanted to catch you. Let me get this.